Good evening and welcome to the June 29, 2020 School Committee Meeting. The first order of business this evening before we get into the agenda is due to town elections last week and Mrs. Tosti being reelected to the School Committee. We need to reorganize our committee. And the first thing up is for a nomination for the Chair of the School Committee.
So Jim, let's actually do a roll call attendant.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So used to being online.
What kind of a meeting is this?
I know, right? Exactly. Let's start. See who's present.
Mr. Adams, you are not going to be able to do this for another year.
Yeah, right? I'm definitely not. Mrs. Tosti?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
Mrs. Bates?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Ms. Williams, I do not see on at this point in time. Now that we officially have started and have a quorum, I would entertain a motion to elect the Chair of the National School Committee for the 2020-2021 school year.
I would nominate Ms. Tosti to remain as Chair.
For a second.
Second then.
Any discussion?
No.
All yours.
That's a great choice.
A roll call vote then. Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Oh, hold on. Ms. Williams is coming in.
Should we tell her she's the Chair?
Right. You snooze, you lose.
Mrs. Williams? We have just nominated and seconded Mrs. Tosti as the Chair of the School Committee. Any, we're in roll call for the vote.
I object. I'm kidding. Go for it, Lori. If you're willing to take the punishment for another three years, go for it.
So I forgot where I was. So, Mr. Kendall, did I? Mrs. Bates?
Yes.
And I say yes.
Mr. Terry?
Hi.
Ms. Williams?
Godspeed.
Mrs. Tosti, are you willing to accept the role?
Sure thing. Thank you.
Now I'm going to turn over to you for the Vice Chair.
Yeah, I'm back. Okay. So now for the Vice Chair, does anybody have a nomination for that?
I would nominate that we keep Mark Terry as Vice Chair.
Second.
And then we'll do a roll call vote on that. Erin Williams?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Yes.
Kathy Bates?
Aye. Yes.
Did you freeze Kathy?
Oh, she said yes.
Oh, just say yes. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
That's all right.
Lori, yes. So thank you, Mark.
Mark needs to vote for himself too.
Mark, you said. Hi.
Yeah. Excellent. And then we need a nomination for the Secretary.
I nominate Kathy Bates.
Do that Kathy?
Are you willing to do that again Kathy?
Yes, I am. If you will have me, I will definitely do it.
Well, it sounds like Erin nominated you. Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor, Mark Terry?
Hi.
Erin Williams?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Yes.
Kathy, are you willing to do it?
I am. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. That passes. So here we are. Nothing, much has changed. Nothing at all. We can move forward and I will read the rest of the agenda items for the evening. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. And after our call for order and the reorganization of the School Committee, I'm going to be making the motion, which I'll make now so I don't have to make it again later for entry into executive session under GL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, "To Conduct Strategy With Respect To Collective Bargaining Or Litigation If An Open Meeting May Have A Detrimental Effect On The Bargaining Or Litigating Position Of The Public Body And The Chair So Declares Ashland Educators Association Teacher Contract, Ashland Educators Association Nurses Unit, Ashland Educators Association Unit B Educational Support Personnel, Ashland Secretaries Unit, And Ashland School Custodian And Maintenance Workers, And Under Section 21A2, "To Conduct Strategy Sessions In Preparation For Negotiations With Non-Union Personnel Or To Conduct Collective Bargaining Sessions Or Contract Negotiations With Non-Union Personnel, Dr. Michael Kyra With The Intent Of Returning To Open Session." So do we have a second for that?
Second.
And I'll do a roll call vote to go into executive session. Erin Williams?
Aye.
Mark Terry?
Hi.
Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
And then I for me, and just for whoever might be tuned in right now. I'm just going to read the rest of the agenda items real quick so everybody knows what we're coming back to do. Back into open session, we'll have time for public comment. We'll have a COVID update. We will conduct the superintendent's evaluation, approval of contract for Dr. Michael Kyra, HEROES Act Advocacy Letter, Approval Of Mobile Library On School Park Property With Claire Goss, Summer School Committee Retreat And Meeting Schedule, Warren Approvals, And We Have Minutes To Review May 27, 2020, June 10, 2020, June 12, 2020, Acceptance Of Gifts And Donations If There Are Any Committee Reports Of Activities, Member Updates, Action Items, And Then We Will Adjourn. So we will be moving into executive session and we will be back hopefully as soon as possible to address the other items on the agenda. Hello, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Those of you who were hanging around. I just want to give everybody a chance to sign back in here. Make sure we've got everybody. I see Kathy. I see Mark. I don't see Mark, but I see that he's here. Paul Kendall, Erin Williams, I see you. Hi, Paul Vera. Welcome. Welcome to your final meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosti.
Okay, so we are back in open session and I'm going to, before we get started with the rest of the agenda, see if there's anybody here for public comment. All right, seeing none, we will move to the COVID-19 update from Mr. Adams.
Okay, Mrs. Tosti, I would also ask that in looking at the agenda, if we could move Ms. Goss up after the COVID update. I don't think she, that's why she needs to sit through the superintendent's evaluation.
Absolutely.
Claire, if that's okay with you?
Yep, that's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So the COVID-19 update, right? Couple things. One, as you know, last week, at the end of last week, the Commissioner of Education Jeff Riley did publish Initial Fall School Reopening Guidance. And I want to be very clear, this is initial. And he means that because over the next six weeks, they'll be adding to this as it deals with transportation. You know, looking at things such as music, chorus, things of that nature, and how those are going to be impacted within schedule, especially with physical distancing concerns. There will be conversation about the in-person you know, learning and the remote learning. As you know, he gave us three options. A hybrid, a remote full, and an in-person full. With obviously the goal of the state is to look at having everybody come back into the buildings. That's the, that's the goal. I will say, the Commissioner as well as the Governor have been very thoughtful in terms of looking at all the data and the science before making any irrational decisions. I think their focus has been to look at this data and say, okay, can we maneuver education in such a way that's safe and it gets kids back in the schools? They recognize that the social emotional toll that this is having on families and kids especially, not having the connection to their school setting is real. And there, I don't want to pretend they're pushing that as an agenda just to get kids back in, to open the economy, to get parents back to work and to focus on the social emotional well-being of parents and kids. But it is part of it, right? We can't discount the fact that if kids are home, families aren't working. Many families can't go to work. And that has to be a part of the conversation. And we as a superintendent's organization, I think tomorrow, we have another meeting with the Commissioner to continue to add some guidance. There's been conversation about adding a $225 per pupil grant, if you will, that has to be spent by December of '20. So it's part of the CARES Act that came through the federal government to the states. The Governor is setting aside a pot of money for districts, but it's to go strictly towards purchasing of equipment, PPE, and you know, sanitizer and things of that nature. So we're spending already about $100,000 on a variety of products, whether it's disposable masks, gloves, sanitizer, shields. Kathy's got specific shields that she's looking for for her programming. I meet with Audrey LaCroy every Monday at 8 o'clock and we talk about the needs of the Health Office and Health Services. And one of the requirements is that there's an isolation space that's created. So we will be looking at taking over. Pete Regan no longer has an office, put it that way. His office has become the isolation room because it's right off from the nurse's office. So he and Kate Altman will share an office space this year. Then Sarah Davidson's losing her office as well at Pittaway because the nurse's office, actually, we're going to create a doorway in between the nurse's office and Sarah's office, which will then also now become part of the medical suite, if you will. As you know, a lot of our elementary schools have had carpet. So we have to tear those up and put down some linoleum so it's easier to clean as well for kids who get sick or it's just more sanitary. So that, those are projects that are underway right now. And all of the money that is going into this is part of that package, the CARES package that's coming to the town. So it's not coming out of our operating budget to cover these costs as long as they're strictly related to COVID-19. We're hoping to get more guidance from the state as to how we can utilize the funds. So if we're looking at transportation, for instance, and having to maybe add more buses, what does that look like? We know it's about $75,000 to $80,000 a bus. Can we pay for it out of these COVID funds? So it doesn't impact our budget. So the Commissioner has asked each school district to submit by mid-July a test, you will, he's calling it a pressure test, of the ability to set up our classrooms in three foot versus the six foot. That's really the thing that came out of the guidance. Moving away from six feet of physical distance to three feet. So looking at classroom space, all desks, forward facing with a teacher. So think of 1950s, everyone in rows, but at three foot intervals versus six foot intervals. So instead of getting in, so Mike and I today, excuse my dog. Mike and I today, he doesn't like other dogs. Mike and I today walked the buildings and had, there were a couple that were set up with three foot, exactly more like four foot. We think we can get between four foot space in between desks and aisles instead of just three. And we're able to get in 27 desks, Mike, I think it was today, in one of the rooms that we went to versus 14 desks at a six foot. The medical community has been on top of this the whole time saying, "We believe that with other precautions like masks being worn, that three to six feet is sufficient and the health concerns are mitigated." So there's going to be conversation about six foot, three foot. Listen, if we stay 20 feet apart, certainly much better than it would be if it was six feet, right? But physical space just doesn't exist within our buildings. So we have to go through and actually set up classrooms in all of our buildings and look to see what it means. And then we have to submit documents to the state certifying that we've done that and that we have a plan. All three of these plans will be viable options for the town of Ashland. There are communities that can't do this and there are going to be additional costs. And those are the drivers that the Commissioner is trying to use as leverage with the state legislators to fund Chapter 70 and the Student Opportunity Act a little bit more to ensure that districts are not, that that money's not being cut out of the budgets, the local aid. That's really, you know, in a nutshell, what's happening with the guidance. I did send it out to the community and shared it with everyone. And we did set up a separate email account just for the reopening so we could answer specific questions. I think I've had four or five come in and staying on top of those. And I will actually pull together those questions into a document that we can share on the website as well. Questions there?
Any questions for Jim?
Jim, I guess I have one. In the Governor's or in the Commissioner and Governor's guidance, it talks about K and 1, mask being optional, but two and up, they being required. Have you talked to Mr. Regan about how you see that working in Warren and expectations in different classes and see what's being seen by other children, et cetera?
Have I spoken with him? No, not yet. I have asked my principals and administrators to go on vacation this week. So next week is when everyone's coming back into the district and we will start having those conversations. There are working groups in each building that have been set up with educators, administrators. So they will be focused on the guidance and the details that are in this plan and how it's going to impact their buildings specifically. But it was pretty clear from the Commissioner on Friday when we had a chat with him. Somebody asked the question, "Are the masks going to be optional?" And he was very clear. The answer is no. Grades two and up, they will be worn. It will be a mandate. It was pretty, he was pretty adamant with regard to that. So, but clearly that will come with questions with families and kids and teachers. And what do you do if, you know, kids aren't wearing them? How do you approach that?
If you've got two siblings, ones in second, ones in kindergarten.
It's going to be a very interesting conversation, Erin, for sure. I, listen, the one thing he's also mentioned over and over again is it's not going to be perfect. We have to understand that we will have COVID positive cases in our school system across the Commonwealth. It's going to happen. We can't, you know. But the remote learning in itself is not appropriate for all students and all families. And we need to ensure we get an opportunity to get our kids in the schools. You know, we're still looking at about 10% of our staff and our kids who have responded initially that they're not coming back or that they do not anticipate coming back to school until there's a vaccine. So this is going to add many more layers of complexity to what we're trying to accomplish. So that's, it's going to be an interesting seven-week ride, to be honest. And the Commissioner has been clear, they're not just going to publish guidance just to give us guidance so you can get it out to your community. They're going to take their time and look at the data and look at the phases of what's happening and to see if that, there's that, you know, second wave, if you will, continuing to go through like it is across other parts of the country. But the studies and the data show that the Northeast especially, who takes wearing masks seriously, who takes the physical distancing seriously, and where we've had this really cautious and conservative approach to opening up is actually benefiting our citizens more than the willy-nilly, "Let's just open everything up and hope it goes away."
Yeah. Well, and to that point, Jim, I think one of my concerns as a member of the School Committee is community backlash against us when a lot of what we're going to be able to do and what your reopening task force is going to be able to do is completely constrained by what the guidance is.
Absolutely.
And just making sure the community recognizes that. You only, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no. I was going to say, and that's, I think we've been pretty consistent with our communication about where the guidance is coming from and what we need to do. Listen, I've got both extremes, right? I've got the extreme on one side saying, "Don't ever open up again until there's, you know, a vaccine." And then the other group saying, "Why aren't we all fully back in school?" So the measured approach needs to be how we move forward. And we are going to follow the guidance given to us and the mandates given to us by the state who are using the best minds in medicine and science in the Northeast and then, you know, in Massachusetts to help make these decisions. Then families are going to have to make their own decision. And I, you know, trying to figure out, what does that mean? Does it mean families are homeschooling their kids, which is very different? Or are we obligated as a, as a school district to provide education to families who are deciding to keep their kids home for, you know, for their own belief system of not sending kids back because of COVID?
And I would hope too that that's one of the questions that gets answered a little bit further down the road from the state because we're not going to be the only community that has people at home. And it does make a difference whether they're categorized as homeschoolers or remote learners.
Yep.
Responsibility on us is different. And I hope that that will be addressed by the Commissioner. But, yeah.
My other question, Jim, was the hybrid model.
Yep.
Because if one town does it different from the next and you have a teacher with children in one town that the other town chooses something different, it doesn't seem like you can plan at all really for the hybrid model. And that has to be a statewide mandate because we have too many parent teachers in the state that are going to be conflicted if you have multiple towns doing multiple plans for hybrid.
Right. Yeah, I mean, like I said, we understand the complexities of it, but we also have to think about what our role is and responsibility is to educate the children of Ashland. And that's number one. You know, certainly we have been, and this committee has been very supportive of our educators and our employees all throughout. And I don't ever want that to get lost in the shuffle of things because you truly have. You've thought about our employees every step of the way since March. And that will continue, but we still have to, at some point, we have to make some determinations as to how we're going to educate our kids. And it may not work for everybody. It may not work for every parent. It may not work for every educator that we have. So we will do our best to meet the needs of everyone. You know, certainly we've had conversation internally about what that might look like, Erin, when with certain families and certain teachers who have, you know, kids in other, live in other districts. And, you know, I always use the example in my own house. I've got four different districts here represented in my house. And it's not going to be the same in any of them. You know, I'm hearing the vocational schools are more likely saying we're bringing our kids back because our class sizes are typically lower. So it'll be interesting. Yeah. But we will continue to update you.
Jim, just a question, whether the Governor or Commissioner, has anybody thought about any guidance for parents on masks? And what I mean by that is, like, I've gotten a mask that my sister-in-law made, right? And the intent was that I would use that going to the grocery store and things like that. It isn't a mask made out of a material that I should sit and wear for a long period of time. That I would be very uncomfortable, just it's not as breathable. It's something that was a material that was made for that. And I wonder whether there are any thoughts to capacity or places to go for particular masks that we can, that we'll be able to direct families to. Because I assume a lot of them, like my kids, they're not going to have masks, right? They don't have masks right now that I would send them to school with to sit in a potentially warm classroom and breathe through for a long period of time.
Yep.
So attention to the masks are very different, right?
Yeah. So they have provided initial guidance to districts on what masks should be purchased as for us to have those reserves in our bills. But I can tell you Audrey is meeting with the nurses and they're putting together their own protocols and suggestions, working with the Department of Public Health as well as the nurses who are on the Commissioner's reopening task force. So they're setting their own protocols. And what, one of the things that she and I talked about today was we're going to start communicating on a weekly basis from the nurse's office, things that you need to be thinking about. So part of the plans are that parents are going to be responsible for the wellness check of their kids in the morning, right? They're not coming into the schools and we're not going to be using thermometers and testing temperatures of kids. And all of this is going to be done before kids get on the bus or before they drop off at school. But that being said, Audrey's been really adamant about, "We want to make sure that we're providing families with not only things such as appropriate masks, appropriate use of masks, how to, you know, put them on, take them off, when to do that." And there are a bunch of videos that have been created that they're collating and that we'll share with the community. But we do feel it's important, Paul, to your point, that on a regular basis, we're sending this out to families. Even getting kids to practice wearing a mask at home as early as possible for an hour a day, two hours a day, a couple hours a day. We are going to have to build in mask breaks, if you will, where we have an opportunity to get our kids even outside in the environment, outside, and still physically distanced, but outside where they can take the mask off and get some fresh air so that it's not on the entire time. So it's a point well taken and something we will address internally, even if it's not addressed at the state level.
No, that's great. And early they can get that out so people can get their hands on it.
Yeah. And that's been our issue with the Commissioner and the Governor, that again, they're not going to issue the next round of guidance until the end of July.
And that's the big one too.
Yep. And that's just a little preparation, right? Yeah.
Well, that's all we have until then.
It's, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim before we move on? All right. Thank you, Jim. And Claire, you're up next. Hello? I think you, yeah, there you go.
Aye.
Aye.
Hello. Thank you for adding me to your agenda. I'm Claire Goss. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends of the Ashland Public Library. As most of you know, I'm co-chair of the summer reading program with Lois McCollough, who's our children's librarian. Like every other thing in the world, we have had to pivot the summer reading program because currently patrons are not entering the library. They are able to check out books curbside, but it makes it really hard to run a summer reading program with lots of fun events and minute tracking and photos and activities and crafts when you can't have children in the library. And my understanding is that children will probably be the last people welcomed into the library for all the reasons you just covered, Jim. So we are, you know, we have some money saved for rainy day and rainy day is here. I did not do any fundraising this spring because all of our local businesses are strapped for cash, but we still have some money left over. And so we decided we'd like to use that to build some little free libraries around town to increase our community's access to books this summer while the library is still closed to browsing. So are you all familiar with the little free libraries? There's one at the Corner Spot. It's like a little, I could show you a picture, but you know, it's like a little cute little box and you take a book, leave a bucket. We have, we had a couple volunteer to build the one at the Corner Spot four years ago with materials that we paid for from Ashland Lumber. And we recently received approval from the Select Board to install additional little libraries at Town Hall, the Ashland Farmers Market, and the Community Center. We have builders already lined up for all three of those sites. And plus, we've been asked to arrange for another site by Oak Street, by the Town Forest, and maybe another site additionally on Pond Street somewhere. So on top of those community little libraries that the Friends are going to set up, the Select Board was also encouraging us to install them at the schools. So ideally, we would have another five little libraries, one at each school site. We already have one Ashland Public School family member who's offered to build one. We have an Eagle Scout lined up to build another. We're in the process of asking the Girl Scouts and the ABA, if any of their members would like to build little libraries for the schools before we then can even reach out to our broader community on Facebook. Build little libraries for the schools before we then can even reach out to the broader community on Facebook and Twitter and see if any other families would be willing to build. So again, these materials will be paid for by the Friends and then we just have volunteer builders to create them. Right now, the one at the Corner Spot is monitored by a local family. So they go and just check to make sure it's working, it's not leaking, they replenish the books. These little libraries, the Friends are putting up this summer, we'd ask for more family volunteers to adopt, basically adopt a little library. And we've worked closely with the COVID-19 Task Force to create a plan for safety. Instead of swapping the books as is traditional with a little free library. They will be available, these books are just a tape, no strings attached. If you want to return the book, you can arrange that through the Friends of the Ashland Public Library and there will be laminated signs. All over the Little Free Libraries explaining the protocol. We're gonna follow the same CDC and Institute of Museums and Libraries Protocol that the Ashland Public Library is currently using, which is to quarantine books for at least seventy-two hours. Before putting them back into circulation. So if people want to, if they're finished with the book and they don't wanna give it to a friend or a family member, they can drop it back off with the Friends. We will quarantine the book for seventeen-two hours before we return it to a little free library. That's my whole spiel. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I will go to the committee for questions.
Claire, are you looking for anything from us? I mean, are you looking for us or are you just trying to make us aware of what you're trying to do?
Yes, so Jim suggested I come and lay this plan out for you because I think we need school committee approval to place it on school grounds. Is that correct, Jim?
Yeah, it's not, they're not permanent structures, but in our policies typically relate to permanent structures as well. But, you know, we'll work of Claire work with with John Murray and Joe Richardson to to find the appropriate place to have these. At our building sites. But anytime we're putting things on to the school property, I think the school committee should should weigh in on that.
Yeah, that's usually our process since it's going to go on school property. So I think that would be the first order of business is us us giving our approval. And then usually the next thing we do is make sure that you talk to or you plan to talk to both Jim. And any of the folks that have a good idea about where things should and shouldn't go. And then I guess any kind of thinking through any. COVID-type concerns, like if I'm grabbing a book and I touched everything in there. Does that put the next person at risk who goes to pick? What are we gonna do about making sure, at least in this period of time, that we are not creating a liability for ourselves?
Yes, that's, I think that was a concern for the Select Board initially as well, and I'm not a public health expert. But I can tell you that we're gonna be following exactly the same guidelines as the Ashland Public Library. So when I go curbside pickup at the library, the librarian comes out and puts the book on the table and walks away. And then I pick up the book and it's up to me if I wanna additionally quarantine the book in my house for another seventy-two hours. But those books have already not been touched and the ones the Little Free Library will be the same. But they'll be placed in the Little Free Library by the by these volunteer families following COVID protocols. And then they'll be kind of sitting there also for several days to weeks. So I don't think we're, I and I and Betsy Emberly did find an article, I can't remember the source. Saying that they're not too concerned because the Little Free Libraries are outside. Like the doorknobs on the outside are, you know, there's just less less risk for exposure in terms of germs germ transfer. I'm not being very eloquent, but. Yeah, it's, we're we're just gonna, we're just following the same protocols the library is at this point and hoping for the best.
So Laura, can I ask one more question? To Claire, would these be things that once, once they're put up, assuming the committee approves them, that they're intended to be there? Forever? Or is this gonna be kind of only while the library is not able to be functioning in its normal way?
That's a great question. I'm imagining the ones in the community sites will be forever likely. I would like to keep the ones at the school going, I think, once, and it would depend slightly on our inventory. These books will be, this will be stocked by books that are leftover from book sales. And also additionally, I'm hoping to spend some of our fundraising money to replenish them as the summer goes on with popular titles that kids would find exciting. I think I'm hopeful that the kids that I really love to target in the summer reading program are the ones that had, maybe don't have books at home. English is not their first language. They don't have the library set up in the middle of the house, that they're walking by ten times a day to grab a book. So my hope is by setting these up on school grounds, kids will start to notice them, maybe ask questions about them. And maybe know that there's just this place where they could always go grab a book if they want one. But again, I do need to check with Betsy and Lois and see what our long-term. Plan would be, but it's not looking like. Like there's a short-term possibility of us having kids back in the library. Like it's not this summer, I'd be very surprised if we end up being able to have children back in. So. Even if they end up being moved off school sites to somewhere else in the community, I still think it's worth the time to build them so we have them.
Claire, is there any intention to kind of have like the one that's at the middle school? Having middle school appropriate reading and the one that's at the, you know what I'm saying? Like, is there any kind of monitoring of the content that's gonna be available or?
That is absolutely my hope. We have, Lois has already done, Lois and the Friends, the board has done a fantastic job sorting all those books by reading level for our book sales. So it's not perfect, but there's already, the inventory's already been sort of generally sorted. And then Tom's going to pick up Peter from baseball. Yeah, so I think they've, I think that would be my hope is then to have, you know, more advanced literature at the high school sites. Have easy readers at Warren and Pittaway. And then have some, you know, chapter, early chapter books at Mindes. I think that would be fantastic. And then, of course, we're not asking people to replace them when they're done reading. There's no expectation then that that the reading levels would get mixed up because this is really just a gift. It's just, please, please keep reading, please keep reading this summer, these books are are for you, so.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, I love these things, every time I see them, I'm like, really? Like I can just open the door and take a book? I I think they're fabulous. And it just as long as, I guess the only thing that would, as long as Jim and whomever needs to approve where they go, obviously. And 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 as long as that just people opening and closing and touching is not creating problems that we don't want during.
I just got a text from Betsy saying that the Center for Disease Control and Prevention told the Institute of Museum and Library Services. That, quote, "We are not concerned at all about paper-based materials like books being a transmission root." Which I think is why libraries have been able to reopen largely. I think actually the seventy-two hour rule is generous. I think, I believe Paula said that some libraries are only quarantining books for twenty-four hours and Paul's doing it for seventy-two to be extra safe.
Any other questions or comments, concerns from anybody?
So, question, Claire, just, I think, you know, thanks for doing this, by the way. I think it's pretty cool that we're expanding it and giving people access. Are the are the families or people that are maintaining them, are they taking pictures to to show what is in these? Especially, you know, the the schools we're talking about might be kind of correlated, like you said, based on content. But I would assume the other sites aren't. And, you know, it's one thing if we had two or three, now we're gonna have however many. You know, is there anything that somebody could go to to say, hey, you know, at least five days ago, this book was in the one of the community centers? So I'm gonna go see if it's still there.
That's a great, marketing happens to be my specialty. So you're you're speaking my language. I think that's a great idea. I would love to have the volunteers, like, again, we don't have these families lined up yet, but I'm I'm very optimistic that I'll have volunteers. Given that the enthusiasm that families around town have for the summer reading program. So once we have these volunteer families lined up to restock throughout the summer. I think it'd be great to even every, every time they check in on the little library, just snap a picture, they can text it to me, I can throw it up on the Friends of the Library Facebook page. Up on Twitter, show everyone like, oh, the Little Free Library at Warren School was just restocked this morning, come and grab your, you know, Mercy Watson and your. Mo Willams or whatever it's gonna be, so.
And and definitely, you know, if people are looking for help or or need tools or help building, just feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Paul. I gotta volunteer, gotta volunteer.
He will get right over there. I thank you, I think it's a great idea. I don't know if there's anything, do we need to take a vote on this now? Or do we wanna wait and see when the locations are determined or what do you suggest, Jim?
No, I think you can go ahead and and just give give the permission to Claire and the Public Library to work with. Myself and and our building grounds maintenance group to appropriately place them outside of our buildings.
Let me take a swing out of motion.
Would you please, Paul?
I move that we allow the Friends of the Ashland Public Library to place their mobile libraries. At each of our five school sites, convene administration approval.
Second.
And then all in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mark? Mine for me, so we will look forward to seeing.
Thanks, Claire. Thank you so much, I'm gonna duck out.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll just have you in in his first official act come July one. Coordinate that with with Dr. Kira, please.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it, sounds good. Write it down, Mike.
I look forward to it, Claire, maybe I'll. Maybe I'll, if I can rope a volunteer and volunteer up with one of these boxes, too.
Fantastic, I love it. Yeah, you you can't get rid of summer reading program, Mike, I mean, I'm hot on your tail, so.
Never do that, thanks, Claire.
Thanks so much, bye.
Bye, Claire, thank you. Okay, next up superintendent evaluation. So this is the time of year that we have the superintendent's evaluation. Craziest year we've ever had and on a lot of different levels, as you all know. And this doing this by Zoom is also a little crazy. But I am just going to be looking down, I apologize at my phone because that's where the information is. But I will share with you the results of the school committee. So for those of you who need a refresher in the fall. The school committee sets a number of goals for the superintendent to meet. And then we check in during the year to let him know how he's doing on the goals. And then we also have a number of standards that are in a rubric. Based on operations and curriculum and instruction and community involvement and so forth. That we evaluate the superintendent on at the end of the year. Everybody completes an individual evaluation, all five members, and we all have our individual comments on our own evaluation. And then the chair puts together an evaluation from the committee that best represents. With the with the majority opinion of the committee about how Mr. Adams is doing and how he performed for this year. So on the the goals, their professional practice goal. Mr. Adams met that goal. He made on the student learning goal significant progress. And on the district improvement goals, there were two of them, he met those goals. And you'll you'll hear more about those details when I read the narrative. But again, the goals were set in the fall and Mr. Adams was well on his way to meeting all the goals. And in fact, did meet many of them. But as you know, we got sidelined in March and from that point forward. Although some of the goals we were able to still remain focused on, SEL, for instance, which is something that we do. Whether we're on remote learning or whether we're in school, that's something that we could continue to focus. But certain other things, like curriculum work and so forth, a little bit more difficult to manage. In those months when we were trying to figure out what our remote learning program was going to look like. So the understanding from the school committee is that the goals were on track and that at a certain point we shifted. And we've all commented on also the performance of the superintendent during this period of crisis. So the, there are four standards that we evaluate the superintendent on instructional leadership. Management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. The superintendent received a proficient mark from the committee on the instructional leadership. And in management and operations exemplary, family and community engagement exemplary. And professional culture exemplary. So with an overall rating of exemplary for this year. In order to see, I'm not gonna go through because there are a number of many categories, subcategories under these. Where we have to evaluate the superintendent and then we tally those. And it comes up with either unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. And then again, on this form, it's the the rating reflects the majority opinion of the school committee. So the overall rating is exemplary and it was broken down, as I've said. And then I'm going to read to you the statement of the school committee. That talks about a little bit more of the details behind the evaluation. And anybody who wants to see the full evaluation, it's a public document with all the subcategories. And the individual comments by, in under different parts of this evaluation. They will be in the administrative offices. But for now, I'm just gonna read the main findings. And that is the Ashland School Committee recognizes that this has been an extraordinary year with pressures and challenges presented by the pandemic COVID-19. Which required us to move to remote learning. Jim was on track to meet and did meet some district goals when the circumstances changed in late winter. As in most cases, unexpected circumstances and stressors reveal one's true leadership abilities. In this case, they revealed Jim's extraordinary leadership. He led transformation while not perfect of APS education. In this regard, Jim's work ethic, which is, was not called upon to be evaluated in the standards we use, must be acknowledged anyway. While focus continued on many priorities, including the Mindes Building Project, SEL, communication. Implementing new curriculum, developing budget priorities, just to name a few. Mr. Adams continued to show the kind of leadership we needed. This includes concern for our most vulnerable students organizing meals and supplies. Working with the AEA and others on a remote learning plan and fiscal planning for the future. Mr. Adams provides strong leadership from the top, but empowers his administrators. His financial acumen assists with creating a values-driven budget. He works well with our town manager, community groups and state leadership, looking out for what is best for students. He has demonstrated leadership and dedication to our district. Through sound fiscal planning and management, we hope to be able to weather the economic downturn. The combination of Mr. Adams familiarity and dedication to our town, his work ethic, his ability to work collaboratively with all stakeholders. And his ability to plan for the future strategically make Mr. Adams an exemplary superintendent. It appears next year will continue to be especially challenging. Mr. Adams has shown he's capable of working, planning and leading through crisis and we are fortunate to have him as the leader of Ashland Public School. So an excellent evaluation, congratulations, Mr. Adams. Thank you for all you do for Ashland and your commitment to the students and the staff and the school committee. And all of your amazing administrative team. And again, there are more details because there are a lot of subcategories in the evaluation. But those are the, that's the the summary. And I invite any school committee member who would like to add to that or clarify anything, to please jump in now and give us your thoughts.
I'll I'll jump in first and just say, Jim, thank you. I I don't even know that committee members. All right, I'm gonna change my rating now. I don't even know that as committee members, you really know how much you've been working. Over the last three-plus months or whatever it's been. But I am taking a guess and saying it's been an extraordinary amount. And, you know, you've you've often said, I think I remember you saying it when you interviewed with the committee before I was even on it, that nobody's gonna outwork you. And I think you've more than proven that. And so in the ordinary course, I I often find myself saying something about how you're the right superintendent for the community of Ashland. I still believe that to be true. But I think this year in particular and over the last few months. the amount of time and energy you put into trying to do the best for this community and every child in the school district can't be can't be overestimated. It's just done so much. And thank you.
Anybody else? Comments? Clarification? Concerns?
So I'll jump in. I just I will repeat what Mark said. I'll echo what he said. You know, throughout this, this is a difficult year to review because the tools given, it aren't what we focus on. We always say that. We always say that, hey, we set goal A, but during the year this changed. And nothing's more, nothing more true than than that this year, right? So the tool doesn't allow us to really highlight where his time is spent and the value that he's added to those things that have crept up. And, you know, I don't think to your point, Mark, I don't think most people even have an idea of the time and effort that he and and his entire team and put in. And he leads by example. He expects a lot of the team. And and so it kind of trickles down from that. We get a lot of value out of out of all the administrators because of his leadership. So I think that's that's incredibly important. I don't think people, even if we say it up here, I don't think they're gonna, you know, get the time spent and dedication. So I get to see it probably a bit more than than most because of some of the projects we worked on together. And and that's why I like people understand, too. So all this happened. And he and he and particularly also Mike has put in a lot of time to make sure that our other priorities haven't fallen by the wayside, including the building project. So just after what Mark said, I think it's a very challenging year and appreciate the effort. Even, you know, nothing's perfect and we can we can disagree on things, but you can't question the entirety and the and the effort. So it's appreciated.
Thanks, Paul. Any other comments?
Just that I concur with everything you the three of you have already said. So thank you, Jim.
We can move on. This is my second least favorite night, so.
I know.
The problem is we don't have a student rep here to make you cry.
Right.
It looks like he might be doing that anyway.
No, no. So I'll wrap it up. But you know what? It goes back to, and you've all mentioned it, we have a phenomenal team. And that is really, I think, when you look at an organization and we can talk about leadership or whatever, but if you've got a team in place that has the same vision and same value system, which I believe we do, and we've we've worked really hard to develop that, we're able to 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 achieve in wonderful things in the face of adversity, which we have had this year from day one with Triple E, right off the bat with athletics and things of that nature. And so so I think any any compliments that come my way or it is a direct result of of my team, but also the teachers and educators who are doing the most important piece of the the work. You know, we can provide them resources and guidance, but they're the ones doing the heavy lifting every day. And I think it's important to recognize that anything that that we're accomplishing is it's because of them. And I truly mean that. It's not lip service with me. It's I I have a lot of of respect and passion for my educators and my support staff and administrative assistants and custodial and maintenance. I want them to to know that each one of them is critically important to our success as an organization. So, you know, so thank you. But on behalf of them, I appreciate that that you recognize the value of our team.
Thank you, Jim. All right.
So Lori, I guess we need to we need to move to approve it. So I'll move to approve the evaluation as as presented by the Chair. One second.
All in favor, Paul Candle?
Aye.
Aaron Williams? Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
And can I just reiterate, too, that based on on my contract, and I want to be clear for the community as well, that the merit-based pay that comes with my evaluation was waived this year. You know, so I think it just does bear repeating that as part of the contract, no matter what my rating was this year, it would typically come with an increase based on the ratings. But but that's being waived. And we asked to have it waived across the district for all of our administrators, so.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. That was my next comment because this would be the meeting where we would announce any changes to the Superintendent's salary because a rating is directly tied to the increase. And obviously, the better the rating, the better the increase. So it's wonderful that Mr. Adams has continued to receive high marks. But but this year, by choice of of Mr. Adams and in discussion with the School Committee, there will be no changes based on on what's happening in our economy and in our world. So certainly if and when things turn around, it will be nice to be able to revisit some of those things. But we're all on pause for the moment. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Anything else before we move on to the Heroes Act advocacy letter? We're good?
Do we want to actually do?
Do we do Mike's contract?
Oh, okay, sure. Absolutely.
I was gonna skip right over Mike.
I skipped right over you, Mike.
Okay.
Not the first time that I mess up the order here. I apologize. So, Mike, I understand that last meeting, the School Committee asked Jim to negotiate a contract with you and in his executive session, it sounds like that was done successfully. So I will let Jim chime in here.
Sure. Thank you. So in in having conversations with with Mike with regard to, you know, salary as well as length of term of contract and how we're going to proceed as the the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Mike and I have agreed to a three-year contract with a base starting salary of of one hundred and thirty-one thousand. And again, it's all same language as to all of our administrators with regard to merit-based pay. So there's no guarantee increases in there for anybody. And Mike has already been working diligently with Paul and and with Claudia in separate roles, you know, with transitioning, et cetera. And so I think in reviewing the data out there, this is a fair contract. It's certainly not on the high end of where Assistant Superintendents are. But in relation to Ashland and what we're doing here, it's a fair a fair contract.
So does anybody have any questions or comments before we we vote on that?
Just to just to clarify, the contract is same terms as we have previously approved for Paul's contract? You just negotiated a different salary?
That is correct. And and as with all of our, I'd say all of our contracts, but administrative contracts, they will be posted online under the Budget section of the of the website. Should anyone have any interest in in reviewing the full scope and and details of the contracts?
Nobody else says anything? I was gonna make a motion if nobody had anything else.
Excellent. That's what I was asking for.
Move to approve the contract, the Assistant Superintendent Mike Kira, as presented.
One second.
All in favor, Aaron Williams?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Paul Candle?
Aye.
Mark Terry?
Aye.
Lori Tosti, aye. And congratulations, Dr. Kira. It's official.
Thanks, Mike.
Welcome to your new role.
Congratulations. Still expect parades in the streets.
Thank you very much.
Dance party.
I may dance a little less, but we will we will still dance.
We will still dance. All right, now we can talk about the Heroes Act advocacy letter. So the background on this is that I got an email from Karen Spilka's office asking whether the our School Committee would entertain writing a letter to the federal delegation showing support for the Heroes Act, which would bring some financial support if it passes back to the district, amongst many other things. But in covering a lot of other things, it might free up the state to be more generous with Chapter Seventy, and it might have a direct impact with federal funds coming to K through twelve. And so that's why we're being asked to consider whether or not that we want to weigh in. Hopefully, all of you had a chance to read the document and are prepared with any concerns or questions about it.
Just a question for for everyone. I read it. Essentially, it doesn't really have very many asks, it looked like. It looked like it essentially, the primary ask was in the on the second page, it was, it wanted to ease, it asked to ease restriction on the use of Corona refunds for more flexibility and strongly support the recapitalization of our stabilization, state stabilization fund. Aside from that, there wasn't much else as far as asks in there, correct? That was a true advocacy? Was there were those kind of two points?
Well, there might not have been a lot delineated in that letter to us. But the actual, within the actual act, my understanding is there are a lot of asks. And I do have a little bit of a, it would provide seven hundred and fifty billion in state and local fiscal relief, a hundred and fifteen billion for K through twelve, a hundred billion in grants for healthcare providers. And apparently, there are a lot of other moving parts to it that are still making their way through the, I think now it's ready to be addressed by the Senate. I mean, it's, there's a political component to it, obviously. I think it passed in the House and there's question about whether or not it will pass in the Senate based on the makeup of both of those groups. But so 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 politics are involved here and we don't often involve ourselves. But the result to us, if it passes, the financial benefit would greatly, hopefully, impact education in Massachusetts and our district. So I think that's really what we're being asked to do here is make a decision about whether we want to lend our voice to that because we do stand to benefit from it.
And maybe I was, I'm talking about the letter as far as changes to the proposed, what's what's proposed, was just those two things that kind of modify, otherwise it was just listing out those components of the Heroes Act, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, to get all the details, you'd have to do some Googling of of where it's at right now and what form it might have taken as it's making its way through the political process. But my understanding is the reason why we're being asked to weigh in has more to do with, you know, any money coming to the state of Massachusetts is going to ease the financial burden on the state of Massachusetts, making it more possible for us to get the funding that we need. So I think that's the the general feeling behind it. The specifics, I can't answer you because I did some research myself on it today, but I don't remember enough of it to share those details and and feel like I could be right about them. But I think it's more about the general concept of getting behind this federal funding so that it eases the overall financial burden on the state so that there's more for education is how it impacts us. But there are a lot of other moving parts to it that don't technically fall under what we do.
Yeah, I saw nothing alarming about or worrisome about it, but I I'm curious what the others think.
Anybody else think about it?
I haven't, I have not digested it any more than that summary sheet that you referenced for Lori. I'll say that, I don't know if anybody else participated in the MASC event with Congressman McGovern a couple of weeks back. He talked a bit about the bill. And, you know, his view was the House had put the bill to the Senate and the Senate was not looking at it at all yet. It has, I think, a lot of money attached that would come to the local districts through their states. He also sort of made reference to the fact that it is, it's a bargaining process, too, where the House puts out something and then the Senate, most likely because of, as Lori said, boy, those bodies are made up right now, could be carving it back. But my view is that anything we can do to get money dedicated to supporting education is something that we ought to stand behind and I think the bill provides for that among the things.
Aaron, any thoughts on that? I know you usually follow these things.
I'm, yeah, I'm in full support of the Heroes Act, so I think I think we should. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not as caught up on this as I usually am other state House issues. But I think especially if Karen's reaching out to us, like that's a meaningful gesture on her part, so I think we should.
I agree.
Anyone want to make a motion? It sounds like we're on the same page about doing what we can to try to direct some funding to education.
So Lori, I'm just, maybe Mark, if you already have something, I'm not sure what the motion should be. Are we resolving something? Are we just approving, you know, supporting a letter? Are you, are we giving you the permission to sign a letter? What are we doing?
I think you would be giving me permission to sign a letter, and I think the letter, they might even have a, it might look like the letter that that we've all were provided in our packet. And I think in the letter that was initially emailed to me, there was a link that I could click on that really was just re-stating our support for this. It can be signed, I think, by the Chair. And and then we have to send it off to Elizabeth Warren's office. It's the process.
Okay, you know the process. So we're we're authorizing you to sign and send that advocacy letter on behalf of the School Committee.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will, I will, I will take care of that.
Great. Thanks.
Some of our School Committee retreat and meeting schedule. So we talked about that the last time. And Jim, have you thought about that?
I did. So I I talked to the the Select Board. I was waiting for them to determine. Typically, they only have one meeting a month in the in the summer, but I want to make sure they got, I got their schedule ahead of time before we settled in on it on a schedule. I think the committee last meeting thought having our regularly scheduled meetings throughout the summer would be appropriate. So I'm proposing that July eighth and July twenty-second, as well as August twelfth and August twenty-sixth, which are our normal meeting dates that we continue to have those. They do fall opposite of the Select Board, so it'll be just business as usual. And then I think we should revisit probably in the next meeting in July, if we want to do a retreat of some sort.
Okay, yeah, and I did talk to Steve Mitchell about this, and I think they are also going to be having more than one meeting this summer.
They are. They're they're doing, yeah, they're doing their normal first and third Wednesdays.
Yeah. So as long as we're not, as long as we remain on the every other with them.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, I talked to Sue Robey. So so I know our dates are are good.
Okay, excellent. All right, and we'll address the retreat the next time.
So Lori, I think just procedurally on that, at some point early in the year, we voted to set our committee calendar. And so I think we would be either setting this one for the next fiscal year, which we're at, or at least doing something to amend whatever we voted for scheduled before. So I guess toward that end, I'll I'll move to add meetings as proposed by the Superintendent for the months of July and August.
Second.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Aye.
Kathy? Aaron?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. And minutes? Or warrant approval?
Actually, I have some, I have a warrant. Actually, I have some, I have a warrant, so. Right. Between June 8th, 2020 and June 19th, 2020, I Kathleen Bates authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $501,117.49. This includes general fund expenses of $138,250.89, revolving expenses of $326,575.43, grant expenses of $2,755.42, and capital expenses of $33,535.75. Finally, I authorized the roll in the amount of $4,519,332.32.
Thank you. You've been busy.
Yes.
Okay. And we have minutes of May 27th. Anybody have anything on that?
No.
No, I don't think so.
I do not. So do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Sorry, my phone is ringing. I'll second.
All in favor? Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
An aye for me. And then the minutes of June 10th. Does anybody have anything there? Motion to approve those?
Remove.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Kathy? Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Aye. And then finally, June 12th, any changes?
Yeah, we don't have the minutes for those. They didn't get finalized.
Okay, I didn't see them.
No, we didn't get, yeah. They're not finished. I just sent Lori a text. I didn't do it quick enough.
Can we approve them anyway?
So, so Lori, what did you think of those minutes, huh?
Motion to approve.
Second.
They'll be in for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. And then do we have any gifts of donation?
We do. We have one from the AFI in the amount of $4,843 for portable board and projector for the pitaway school.
Excellent. Do we have a motion to accept that generous gift? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Darren Williams?
Aye.
Mark, Terry?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Lori Posy, aye. And then member updates. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to share?
Do.
All right.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I, I just want to say thank you to, to Paul. You know, I forced him to come back on tonight. You know, this is his, his final meeting, his final meeting with us as our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction Assessment. And after four years and I want to wish him publicly the best in Douglas. I know he's already been, you know, trying to get the lay of the land down there and, and there's a new superintendent just jumping into the, into the fire in the middle of COVID is going to be quite the challenge to begin with. And I wouldn't wish that upon a sitting superintendent as I start year seven. Heck with year one. But Paul has brought to our team a lot of energy, a lot of passion for, for students. His connections with our kids and our teachers has been exemplary. And, and I totally appreciate that he is, he's ready for this next step in his career. And, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's exciting. It's exciting for me always when I see folks that I've worked with, you know, move on and, and hopefully take something positive out of this experience. It's not always that positive with me. I get that. But, but at least hopefully we've developed the skills enough where he can, he will be successful. It's not that he can be, he will be successful. I have, I have no doubt in my mind. And, and Douglas is getting, you know, a wonderful person and, and superintendent. So thank you, Paul, and appreciate the time and effort that you've given us, so.
Thank you. And just thank you to the committee and, you know, for four years ago for giving me this opportunity and for always being supportive of me and my initiatives and the work that we did. But also just a big thank you to Jim Adams. He's been a, a great mentor, an incredible leader, a phenomenal superintendent. And I find myself typing letters in Douglas using the words critically important and organization. So I think you've rubbed off without even knowing that you've rubbed off. We do have an incredible, you, you are right, Jim, when you said that about your valuation, incredible administrative team. Every, everyone from top to bottom. So it's been a true honor and a true pleasure to work in Ashland for the past four years. It was really fantastic part of my career. I just want to say thank you for everything that everyone has done. So I appreciate it.
Paul, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
It's been such a pleasure to work with you and we appreciate everything you did for the district. And you're always so helpful and pleasant and hardworking. And we have the added shared experience of chaperoning those kids on the Make-A-Wish trip with the group over the past few years. And I will never forget that and your heartfelt service and the, the way the students respond to you. And you, you, I have no doubt that you will be a phenomenal superintendent and I hope you will remember us and visit us.
Absolutely.
Post it on how you're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure.
Just trying to, Paul, and saying thank you for everything you've done. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Look forward to reconnecting with you at conferences if we ever get to do those again. But certainly stay in touch and a real pleasure. Thank you for all, all the progress you've helped us make as a district.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, same. It's been a, a pleasure to get to know you, Paul. I will miss you and I'll look forward to November of whatever year we get to get together again.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Yeah, I'm gonna miss you too. You know, thanks so much for all you did for us for these last four years. And it was, it was fun working with you and so I, yeah, keep us in touch too. And I, I hope we see you at those conferences.
Thanks, again, for all you've done. I'll, I'll second what everybody said. And if that's what you're, we'll, I'm sure we'll run into you down the case.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Any action items that we need to discuss other than the usual?
So Lori, I was going to give an update to the committee on where we are with the MSBA. Since our last meeting here, we, we did go through the board vote, MSBA board vote. And they not only approved us moving into the schematic design phase, but they were, they were actually, you know, very glowing about what we presented and particularly the, the educational plan. So again, that, that goes to, you know, several people on the call here. And Mike and Jim were instrumental in that. And, and the toughest critic, that we were told are the toughest critic, you know, that's going to really scrutinize the plan, gave it high marks. So and probably, probably makes sense for one of the next couple of meetings, Jim, we should probably, you know, get present the, the current state of the design as it's unfolding. I think we've got some massing that, that, that the group's working through. Probably, hopefully before our next meeting, just to let everybody know. If you see some activity behind Mindes, you see some drilling rigs and things like that. We are going through permitting process for getting one of the geothermal wells, a test well drilled there. So they call it a test well. It's essentially should be one of the operable wells at the, at the end of the day. But they do that so they can understand and evaluate the efficiency of that well and the effectiveness of that well. So they can design the appropriate system. So we're going through the permitting process on that now. And that might, hopefully we'll start the week of July 6th, I believe, is the target week for, for that. So you might see some drilling going on there. That's what that is. And trying to think, Jim, is there anything else we should update them on?
No, I think that's, that's spot on. I, I do think it is appropriate that we get the, an update to them with the, the building layout and the massing. I think it's really cool how it's actually coming together. And, and when we look at educational space, you know, it, it's, MSBA, it's been amazing to, to listen to them because I, I agree with Paul. The, the harshest critic has been, has given Ashland the most glowing response to what we've done. And even went to say this week, this past week, that we should be an exemplar school district, that people should be reaching out to us on how to write the educational profile and the stuff that we're doing. So goes back to the whole mission and vision of us being a model district. And Terry Kwan, who was the one who, you know, it was like Ashland is that district. And publicly I will also state Karen Spilka came to the meeting and, and actually presented. I, I don't think any of us had to say anything. She presented on our behalf, basically, of the Ashland Public Schools and why we need this project and why the MSBA should move it forward. I had nothing more to say. I mean, Karen started in, you know, 1952 and went forward with that whole project. It was great, so.
Yeah. And I guess the other, the other thing is we did finally get the feedback from our PSR submission. Lori, you, I believe you were CC'd on it, so you saw. I can send it around to, to the group. And essentially out of that, they accepted the majority of, if you recall, there's the space template, MSBA space template and they, and then we try to overlay what our, we think our requirements are and where there's differences in spare footages. They come back and either say, they can come back one, one of three things. They can say they'll fully participate with it. So they'll accept the change or the variation from the space template and they'll, they'll be eligible for reimbursement. That means they'll fully participate. They can allow it in the project, but not participate, meaning it won't be available for reimbursement. And then there's a third category that wouldn't fall into any review, but they, they can just not allow something in a, in a project. So if you wanted to have a 15,000 square foot of gym, they just won't allow that in an MSBA project. That would be capped at 12,000 or something like that. So on that, they accepted the overwhelming majority of our variations. The notable ones, the kind of the ones we kind of expected that they wouldn't was the additional 2,000 square feet for the gymnasium to keep the 8,000 that we currently have. And also the SRO office, for School Resource Officer. That doesn't fall into their template. And so that, do I, they accept it in the project that, that square footage is, is on us as well. Those are the two main ones, right, Jim?
Yep.
So there's also there, we've had 60 square foot in there for additional trailer for the nurses suite, but we'll figure out something in close proximity, but that was also not accepted.
Just as a quick question, if you guys want to defer it to when we talk later, that's fine. But anything that's changed in terms of either process or how they're looking at projects generally in light of the pandemic? Are things even changing at all? Or to the point you just spoke to Paul, nurses suite? You know, now do we need to have something different in design and are they supporting that?
Yeah, no. So I mean, aside from questions or conversations, I mean, their process is so, what's the right word? That doesn't sound negative, but it's, it's a bureaucratic process that it doesn't change very quickly. It doesn't adapt, right? And they're very cautious to set precedents and stuff like that. And so, you know, we've, we've tongue in cheek said, well, hey, if we're going to be forced to social distance, we're going to be forced to have an isolation room, you know, shouldn't the space template, you know, reflect that? And then we get laughs back. But in essence, no, I think the, the biggest question we had was that probably would be applicable is if there's any, based on the economic downturn and change in state funding, things like that. Is there any risk to funding the project? And essentially the answer is no, that our, our rate is set at this point, by the way, as well. So we started at 52.26. We got the two, we, we will get the 2% for our sustainability. And then was it 1.31, Jim? For the maintenance?
Yeah, I think that sounds right.
Yeah, so, so I'm not going to try to do the math, but it's 55. whatever percent. You know, 5.57 or something like that percent was our reimbursement rate. And I, you know, I could put quotes around that and an asterisk next to it, that is 100%. Not even going to be close to what our effective is, particularly given our sustainability goals and stuff for the project. It'll, it'll be significantly lower, but that's based on, you know, very, there's so many different caps. There's a square, cost per square foot cap at $333 a square foot. You can't build anything for anywhere near that. We're going to be well above that. So there's site, the site costs are capped at 8% of the, of the construction cost. And so we're going to be well above that, given we're pretty much touching the entire site at, at the end of the project. And, you know, so there's lots of different areas where they're capped. And so it'll probably be somewhere in the 30s, mid, mid to upper 30s, maybe, depending on what we, where we land on things. That'll be the effective. And basically the effective is what was the total project cost? And what is the reimbursement, amount we are reimbursed from just doing that simple math? That's the effective. So I think that's the current status of things. And the, the design team has had several design meetings with different groups within the schools. So I believe there was one with wellness and Dean's staff. And there was other ones with specialists for library and media center and things like that. So just having all these different focus groups on those spaces to really understand the uses and adjuicances. And, and we've had some really good dialogues in the, in the floor plan, particularly around the community wing that houses the path, the, the gym and the music and all those different places. We've been some, some, some progression on that and it's pretty cool. So we'll, we'll definitely, one of the next few meetings, probably try to present something that shows you that progress.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. And again, for all of you guys are doing and the entire committee. Congratulations on your hard work being recognized. I'm happy about that, but not surprised. You guys are really doing a phenomenal job that is very, very impressive. And not surprised at all that it's been recognized and will continue to be. So thank you.
Lori, I just have one comment slash question. So one thing that stood out to me was that we were having a student resource officer space within the school. And this is the first time I, we don't have an SRO right now at Mindes, correct?
We do.
We do? Okay. I would like to add to our summer conference topics of evaluation of policing in schools, just based in light of what's going on nationally with regarding policing in schools near children and potential bias that can be exhibited there in that role, especially for kids as young as third through fifth graders. So it's just something I think we, I'd love, you know, hear both sides of it, but just I think it's something to talk about.
Noted. Thank you. Yeah, I think we're, I think step one is figuring out whether we're having a retreat. But, but then step two is we'll, we'll see what, what needs to be on that agenda. But certainly that is a topic that is on people's minds. So we will, if we, if we have that meeting, we'll definitely talk about that and agenda planning. See where it fits with everything. That and agenda planning, see where it fits with everything. So thank you, Aaron. Anybody else? All right, I think we can take a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second.
All in favor, everybody? Paul, Kathy, Mark, Aaron?
Yes.
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
All right, good night. Thank you.
So much.
Everyone.
Congratulations, Mike. We look forward.
Adia and Chris as well.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, Chris.
Next meeting.
Considering so quietly and patiently all these monthly meetings, thank you. And now now we're gonna really put you to work.
I'm excited.
Yeah, we're excited to have you. Thank you for for joining us.
Crispy?
It's an interesting time.
We can get started together, Chris.
Yep.
That works for me.
All right, man.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.